I'll call the meeting to order and we will start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mayor Kransky, I am present. Groko is absent tonight. Kufal?
Present.
Padilla?
Present.
Rose?
Present.
And Eager.
Yeah.
We don't have any changes to the agenda, so we need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. We have a motion from Eager. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any discussion, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Comments, updates, concerns? Do we have any citizens here that would like to speak tonight or items not on the agenda? Council members? Any updates? And city staff?
I have one item. Pardon me if I should have put this on the agenda, but in reference to the old elementary school, we have an outstanding past due utility bill. This is something we've talked about before. When the county owned the property and it was basically just kind of put on hold, there is an outstanding balance of almost about $960. And I guess I'm looking for a little direction as if that's something that we should try to certify or have the current, the new owner of the property pay for. And then secondly, going forward, the only thing that we would be charging is storm sewer fees. Being that there's a building there, we do charge, and it would be almost about $187 a month would be the charges for that. So I guess I'm looking for a little direction as far as which, how you'd like to handle those. Again, I could bring this back as a regular item if that's preferred. Kind of springing this on you, I understand.
And what's the time period that's from, or?
The past due. That's probably a couple of years. So about the time that this county took over, when it, when it, the tax forfeiture.
You said you could bring it up at the next meeting? You can, you can bring it to the next meeting?
If that's desired, sure.
I guess that would be my preference, just bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, that may be a good idea, just to give people time to think about it.
Okay. That's a consensus, I'll do that.
Sounds good. Anything else from city staff?
That's all I have.
Okay. Next, moving on to the consent agenda, we need a motion to approve consent agenda.
So a motion?
Motion from Padilla, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Eager. Any question or discussions about the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on, public hearings, we don't have any on our schedule tonight. For communication requests and petitions, just a reminder that the tire appliance and electronic collection is coming up on the fairgrounds next week. I think next week, yes. Department and committee act, reports and action items. The first on our agenda is 9B, the city attorney, and we have primo truck and trailer wash and repair parking lot plan.
Thank you, Mayor. What council has before tonight is sort of a, kind of raising this issue that I believe was before the council, would you say, two months ago?
Yes.
Give or take. If you recall, there have been a fair amount of complaints against the, the property for various ordinance violations, not exactly abiding by the parking lot plan that was approved by the council. There's a dirt pile out there that violates ordinances, among other things. And there was some discussion about what is the best way forward at that meeting two months ago. And as a result of that meeting, there was some discussion. And ultimately, Mr. Kokesh, the business and property owner, elected to hire S E H and Justin Black to put together perhaps a new plan to expand his parking lot, expand the capacity for parking the trailers, and put together a plan that would work. He came back to the, the council, and there were some additional discussions. Unfortunately, those discussions have broken down. Mr. Kokesh has walked away from the negotiating table, and it appears that, you know, doesn't have a desire to move forward with the property improvements. And so that sort of leaves us right back where we started. My understanding is that there has been some improvement to the situation out there, but not nearly to the point where the city would like to see. It continues to be an eyesore for the surrounding community. It continues to violate both the spirit and the letter of the parking lot site plan. So I guess this is myself and staff putting it back on the agenda for the council to discuss how it would like to move forward on this matter. Again, it doesn't appear that Mr. Kokesh is willing to move forward with the, the planned expansion of the parking lot and the other improvements. And so essentially, the city has two options: to maintain the status quo of non-compliance or move forward with enforcement action. And the first enforcement action would likely be to revoke the parking lot plan that was approved a number of years ago. To do that, my recommendation would be to set this on as a formal hearing, a public hearing for Mr. Kokesh and perhaps his attorney to attend again. And the council would take under consideration and ultimately decide whether it wanted to move forward with revoking that parking plan.
And it's my understanding we have some neighbors here that would like to speak tonight, so I just ask you to, when you, if you come up to the podium, just introduce yourself, provide your address for the record, and then try to keep your comments under, you know, two or three minutes. Would anyone like to go first?
Yeah, Jerry Gazel. I live at 105 Second Street East there, right across the park from him. And I hope you don't do anything for him because he hasn't done anything that he said he was gonna do. Because I was on planning and zoning when that first came. And I remember, I think, one of my remarks is, "We got a junkyard a little farther east. We don't need another one closer into town." That was the nicest, you know, property out there. And he, he hasn't done anything, he said, excuse me. And, you know, there's more trailers. Most of them, it's turning into like a semi-trailer junkyard, you know? And the trucks out there are junk. They haven't moved. I don't know how many are licensed or anything. So I hope you don't, whatever you can do, don't give them any leeway to go. And with the trucks, a lot of trucks come driving through our residential streets. I don't know if that's par. I mean, I know we did the one in front of there. I think that's maybe a 910 road, but I'm not sure either. But I, that's something you should check too, but pretty soon you'll be wrecking our streets. And I just feel it's gonna lower my property value if that keeps going through the way it is, so that's all I got. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Jerry. Would anyone else like to speak?
So I'm Melissa Schmidt, and I live at 109 Railroad Avenue, and that runs right along that same road. And we have tons of semi-traffic, and it literally shakes our house when they go by. And there's like the manhole, that's a big bump, so when they go over that, it just shakes everything. I can sit in my living room and my whole couch shakes. And we have cameras outside, which, I mean, we'd be able to show you how often they're going by and going by and going by. And there's a lot of kids in the neighborhood, and people have animals and stuff like that. And the grass, I don't think they ever cut their grass. So it's just a big eyesore when you look out the windows all the time to just like a big junkyard. And it's supposed to be residential and not a commercial property that looks like that. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Karen Garman. I'm at 105 Railroad Avenue, neighbor of Melissa's. And the trucks do come down. I have four little grandkids that are out there. They're not in the street, but if we were to go for a bike ride, we don't know, sometimes we don't know where the trucks are coming. Are they coming, are they going down that way? Are they gonna be coming back? And when you, when you do go down, you go try to drive down to, ride the bike down to Walbombs, because the trucks are like everywhere. You don't know which ones are, are they just sitting idle? Or are they gonna be moving? It's just, it's just, I, I just hope that there's some type of structure that can be set up down there. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are the council's thoughts as ours moving forward goes?
What's it look like if we revoke it? Basically, he has to clear everything over there? Or, I mean, what's, what's that process become?
Yeah, I mean, that, that becomes a little trickier. It's the first step in the, the process of, you know, I guess, some level of accountability. So you revoke the parking plan and he doesn't have a legal right to have all those semis parked there anymore. And then it becomes a nuisance. It becomes a zoning violation that, you know, the work doesn't stop at revoking the parking plan, but it is, it is probably the first step. And from there, we have to assess where we're at and the exact legal mechanism we want to use. But we would have a number of tools at our disposal. We could file a civil lawsuit to get a court order to order him to stop and essentially remove all the, the semis out there. Administrative fines are certainly an option, and criminal charges.
Can you do, can you begin with repealing the, the parking? And then, in addition to that, because they're not complying with the way that their property looks out there, can't you start giving them administrative fines now?
Yes, I mean, that, that would certainly be an avenue that we would consider.
Is there kind of a off question? As far as he, he mentioned using it, reading between the lines, as a junkyard. Is that anything that affects, I guess retains to revoking this parking lot permit or parking lot plan? That he's using it for an off, something that's not even allowed?
Well-
Or is that kind of a different problem?
I, I mean, I, it's not necessarily separate from, from the parking lot plan. But it, you know, in, in terms of establishing a basis to move forward on an enforcement action, whether it's, you know, going after him for essentially having a junkyard out there or any of the number of other ordinance violations, you know, having a, a record, having a, a council vote that clearly shows that he's in violation of the, the parking plan, that would be an important basis for moving forward on the, the other aspects of this. And so, like I said, it's not necessarily the, the end. It's not necessarily the, the best mechanism to, to get changed. But I think it's a necessary component to the process so that we have the underlying basis, the foundation, to pursue other enforcement actions. So I guess to answer your question, I wouldn't necessarily dispute the allegations about a junkyard. I, I perhaps would, would share that sentiment. But in terms of, of what the, the actual enforcement action looks like, it's probably likely to include something resembling, you know, that this is a junkyard. But in terms of, for the purposes of revoking the parking plan, I'm not sure that would be language that would be used.
It is an ordinance, is it not, that any vehicles on the prop, property, whether it's, I mean, I can't have a vehicle sitting on my property that's got expired registration, correct? So can we, do we have a legal right to go out in that lot and look at all the trailers and see which ones have current registration on them and look at it from that perspective as well? If they're sitting out there and aren't registered?
So I'm not sure that the city would necessarily have the legal authority to go on the, the property. Certainly if we could recognize any unregistered trailers or, or something similar to that from the, the right of way, then certainly you could assess probably tickets for that. But if, if it looks like it's a pervasive problem that spreads beyond, you know, is, is true or is likely true for most of the vehicles out there, we could consider search warrants. That would give us legal authority to go on the property.
Well, we definitely have to move forward some. I mean, we've discussed this numerous times. You know, the last time he's here, we had, had the meeting with his attorney. We let him know our displeasure with the way it looks out there, and, and obviously he's well now walked away from the meeting trying to resolve it, so I think it leaves us no choice to move forward with whatever options we have.
And I feel that that meeting the council really made an effort to give, to work with him and give him one more, you know, opportunity. So, I mean, he's had that opportunity. He knows, knows how everyone feels, and I, we gotta do something.
Just in addition to the unsightliness of the property, we have businesses that are complaining about trying to get their, their trucks down the road when it's being completely blocked. And that was a scenario a couple of days ago when I was driving. They had the whole road covered with their semis, so nothing could get through there. Something has to change.
One question. Do you think that if they, they could do like a road in their field area there where it's all grass, but they could have like turnarounds and parking stops throughout there? Instead of parking on the road, where they would only be able to come in, go around, and go back out on Highway 5, instead of coming down towards our property?
Do you want to answer this?
I, I could try to. When we were having our discussions about the parking lot expansion plan, that was included as part of that, that they were going to have a, a plan for how the veh, the trucks would come in and out of his property, so they wouldn't be parking on the street, you know? We do have an ordinance for the whole city that semi-trucks are not allowed to be parked on any city street. And so that has been a violation. The council recently, this past summer, also adopted an ordinance that put up, there will be no parking on that railroad avenue from Second all the way down to Tower Street. And then also on Third Street, which abuts their property as well. It goes out to the Compo site there. So from railroad all the way down to Shoreview Lane. And so staff will be putting up some no parking signs here in the near future this month. And so, but it's basically already been in place. It just extends now to any vehicle. But generally speaking, it's always just been the semi-trucks that have been parking out there, not personal vehicles and stuff. So, so to answer your question, yes, that is something that they were actually proposing with their, you know, their, when we were in discussions and talking about it, he was already proposing that he would have some sort of route through his property for the trucks.
So tonight, we need consensus whether or not to revoke Andy Kokesh's approved parking lot plan.
We should maybe back up. What we're looking for tonight is to set a public hearing.
Okay.
And I propose to have that hearing at 7:00 PM October 15th. And that, like you just said though, that would be the, that would be the purpose of the hearing. To consider age, consider revoking-
So is the council in consensus that that's how we move forward by setting that public hearing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Perfect. Do you need anything else?
We need a motion to set that hearing.
When did you say it was going to be?
7:00 PM October 15th.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Motion by Kufal, seconded by Padilla. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all for coming.
Charlie, I just asked one. Is there a, no truck route on that? Is there a sign on that road already going to the west? For no trucks?
I think there is. I would say that.
I was thinking that two or three going around there. I can't remember.
I was, I mean, if not, is that some, you guys can look into? At least maybe Charlie, you know, if they can help enforce it or something, but. Yeah, I know it's more work, but thank you.
Okay. Moving next on the agenda, we have Public Works Department. So we'll invite Ty up to the podium. Do you have any updates for us on I and I?
I and I do not have any updates. I'll, we'll have updates for you next meeting with the letters that are gonna be sent to the residents. The thing I, next thing I, who I have on the agenda is a Toolcat and Skid Loader trade. In 2022, the city purchased a Bobcat Tool plate, cat to replace our aging Gale Skid Loader. At the time, we thought Toolcat would be what would be best suited for our needs, and it'd be more or less, we'd use it more than the, than we did the Skid Loader. But after three years of using it, we've kind of come to the realization that it doesn't. Toolcat is good at a lot of things, but a Skid Loader, we, every time we've used it to do something, we've always wished we had a Skid Loader. You know, when we were using it, it's like, God, we should have never got rid of or got a Skid Loader replaced instead of the Toolcat. So I did go out and get three different quotes for a new Skid Loader. It would be a, a Bobcat S66. It'd be about the same size as the old Gale that we had. Three places was Lan, were Lano Equipment in Norwood, UFC in Lafayette, and Senko, Bobcat, and Mankato. Senko, Bobcat, and Mankato gave us the, the best price and trade. To make up the difference, the difference would be 5460. To make up the difference, we could take from line 400 on, from our streets, our water, sewer, and storm separately. It'd be $1,300 about from each account. So yeah, that's what we. So I'm bringing the council today and asking for that purchase.
What was it? What was it? Was it 57, 460?
5460. The difference.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the new skid steer from Mankato in the amount of 5460.
We have a motion made by Padilla. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Kufal. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The last thing I have is to terminate the, the seasonal aquatic center employees since the season is now over. So I'm just asking the council to make that motion to the turbinate.
Second.
Motion by Eager, seconded by Padilla. Any questions or discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I did put, hopefully it's in your packet, the, the revenue stream for the 2025 season for this year. We're, lessons revenue, we're, it's pretty much the same. But yeah, pretty much everything, we're, we're up from a little bit to quite a bit. Like concessions went up quite a bit. Admissions went up quite a bit. Daily admissions, we're almost 2,000 more than last year. If you look up that chart, 2021 was probably, as far as revenue wise, it was probably one of our best years. We had, that was because it was the year after COVID, and everybody flooded to the, it was packed that whole, that whole summer, so. Like I said, the, the pool, I said it, I said it last year too, the pool kind of ebbs and flows. Sometimes it's popular. Depends on the weather. This year was pretty nice. Had a little bit cooler, cooler June, but overall, the summer was pretty good. We had, didn't have any, any issues at the pool, which is really great to hear. Chain made some changes at concessions. It did really, really well this year, so we'll be sticking with that. No major breakdowns, any of that kind of thing, so, yeah, it, it was a pretty good year, so.
Just one comment I want the park board to be aware of, if you haven't heard it. But I've been getting lots of feedback about staying open those last two weekends of the year. From the public, I know the first weekend of the state baseball tournament was, well, it would have been the second weekend of the tournament, but the first weekend after regular pool season was cold, so the attendance wasn't great. But people loved that it, with just the weekend option, they thought that was great. So just something for the park board to consider.
Yeah, that would be something we, we mentioned that in the park boards, like, oh boy, here we go. They're gonna be asking for all the weekends up to Labor Day now, every year. But yeah, that is something, definitely, if we can get the kids, definitely. Because it is something nice and the, and the fitness people use it in the mornings still. So, and they were really appreciative of it, so, yeah, it's definitely something we can look at, so.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, Police Department. We have Chief Ickton here to talk with us about D R E instructor school. And I also see Officer Kniefel's with us as well. So welcome both of you.
Thank you. That's, good evening. Just the one item is, like you said, the D R E instructor school. Officer Kniefel here attended and passed the D R E Drug Recognition EValuator School, fall of 2023, and has put his training to very good use. I believe he has about 95 DUI arrests now, and half of those have been narcotics DUIs, including another one last night. He currently holds a 100% accuracy rating in identifying at least one impairing drug that the subject would be under the influence of. The State Patrol is now hosting a D R E instructor school in November of this year. Could be not only for D R E, for drug recognition, but the regular field sobriety test as well as the advanced roadside impaired driving enforcement class, our instructor school. Officer Kniefel will be required to attend that training, four-day training, November of this year. And then at some point next year, he would be required to go to Philadelphia once again for, I believe, four days. The training and the expenses are funded by the Minnesota State Patrol, so we wouldn't have a cost there. The cost would be just be for Officer Kniefel's time, kind of the same thing we did last time he went, for the regular D R E school. And then we have, you know, a couple of part-time officers that could fill those shifts. And I've spoken with the Winthrop chief and officer over there. If we didn't have anybody, Winthrop would obviously be willing to cover our city. We didn't have somebody else to cover during that time as well. So I brought Officer Kniefel with me here to answer any questions anyone might have about the program, and go from there.
I think it's pretty neat that you're applying for it. That's, that's kudos for our city, having somebody that's an evaluator in a small town. And, man, I didn't know you had almost 100 DWI. That's a lot close to the area, so I appreciate your hard work.
Thank you.
With that being said, I'll make a motion to approve Officer Kniefel going to the D R E evaluator.
Second. A motion from Padilla, seconded by Eager. Any further discussion or comments? I would just like to keep up the good work, all of you guys at the department. You guys do a good job. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next on the agenda is Gaylord Library Board Member Resignation.
That's Amy Bell. As you know, we hired her as a part-time library assistant within the last month. And so she will be getting off the board because it's a conflict of interest. So she submitted a resignation. It's on page 79 of your packet.
I'll make a motion to approve the resignation of Amy Bell from the library board.
Second.
Motion by Padilla, seconded by Kufal. Just want to thank Amy for her time on the board and, and her current employment with the city. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to new business, we have the Second Street East Lots Purchase Offer.
Dwayne McGuire is here this evening in your packet. He, he submitted a proposal to acquire the three lots that we have over on Second Street East. These are all vacant lots. He desires to build a home over there for- He desires to build a home over there for, for him and his wife, and then also he'd like to acquire the other two lots to construct a twin home or townhome. I'm going to let Dwayne come up to the podium here. But I wanted to mention, he dropped off an updated plan here, and I provided, put that on your table for this evening, where he can go over that. But he has a couple proposals that he'd like you to consider for this this evening. And so, Dwayne, if you're ready, if you want to come up to the podium here, just go over that with them, with the council.
Well, I'm Dwayne McGuire. I actually owned McGuire Electric for thirty-five and a half years and have been a member of the community and, I guess, looking to stay here because I am on the Fair Board Member. I'm a Fair Board Member and I'm a, on the board committee member, and I help a lot with the Christmas lights in town. So I'm throwing the proposal at you and seeing which, where it flies, because we're going to build a new house. Because when I sold my business, I sold my property, and I got to find a place to live.
I'm glad you decided to stick around.
I sold local kid too, to keep it in town.
Maybe just to start out with, the first proposal is for the South Lot. So again, all these lots are the same size. They're seventy-five by a hundred and fifty. They're not necessarily very wide lots, so when you're talking about like a modern day house, it's not a real wide lot there at seventy-five feet. What Dwayne is proposing is to acquire that for two thousand dollars with the addition though of twenty-five feet from the city's park. We have a fairly decent sized park there, and that north end of the park is generally just open space, so it's not being utilized for anything else. So that would bring up that lot to a hundred and, hundred by a hundred and fifty, which would be a nice sized lot, probably a little bit more modernized as far as the lot goes. So that, he's proposing that we would contribute that twenty-five feet of our park lot to the South Lot. And again, his offer is two thousand dollars for that. And then secondly, he's proposing to buy the other two lots where basically he would be looking to ultimately construct a twin home or a townhome on those two lots. He would like some time to construct that though, mainly to try to attract some buyers for that. And so he's proposing that he would be able to have three years to work towards that endeavor, with the understanding that if, at the end of three years, that they aren't built, that the city would have the option of purchasing those two lots back. So he's proposing to acquire those two lots for two thousand dollars as well.
For a patio home, seventy-five feet just isn't enough lot space.
A lot of we had them, the city. Are them the lots that a couple of years ago that somebody was looking?
Yes, sort of, just a little background. So we, the city was trying to basically work with Habitat for Humanity for a number of year, or for a few years there. We weren't able to get them sold. Then we started working with Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership out of Main Kettle. They actually gave us a proposal and the council did accept it for five hundred dollars a lot. They were looking to build some townhomes out there. They were going to build four units, but unfortunately, they never entered a purchase agreement with the city, and they ultimately walked away or stepped back from it. And so at this point in time, we've had no other offers for the property since then, and that was two years ago.
Right now, I would move ahead with a single family home. If you go with the, with the single lot, option of picking up twenty-five foot of the park land to get me to seventy-five or a hundred feet, I'd go immediately with the single family home. And with the other proposal, I've already got an interested party for one of the townhomes. And I've been told they will, they will sell because they want them.
I know there's people looking for townhomes. I have no doubt you'd be able to fill them.
Yeah, and, I mean, I would put up fairly nice townhomes. I, I've looked around in other towns at twin homes and stuff, and the way they're building them, my four-door short box truck will not even fit in the garages. And they, and are put together pretty bad. So I would not go down that road.
So for this evening, this, his proposal is here for your consideration. You do have the option of holding a closed meeting on this, being it's a sale of city property, it's illegal right to, for you to close the meeting later in our, this evening, to consider that offer if you so choose. Or also, you certainly have the option of acting on it now if you're, if you're in a position and comfortable with doing that. But you can go into a closed meeting later.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the single lot with the extra twenty-five feet and then the two other additional lots for a thousand dollars each. I feel that Dwayne's ready to go start building tonight, so it'll be nice to get somebody over there. So that's my motion.
When is the townhome supposed to be? Are you saying that the townhome is supposed to be built?
Within three years.
And that'll be in the contract?
That's the, that's his proposal, yes.
It might be shorter than that, Dwayne, correct? Three years if you've got somebody interested. It depends if you get interest, you'd start.
Pardon?
On the townhomes, if you have interest, you would start building sooner than three years on them if you have the interest.
Yeah, if I got the interest, the next year I'll go.
Okay.
Before we get too far into another discussion.
My, my goal is once sold.
You need a second.
Yeah, so the other one.
A second before he starts.
Second, before we have too many.
Second.
Yeah, okay, so we have a motion made by Padilla, seconded by Eager. Now we can have just further discussion. Sorry. Just want to stay with the rules of order here.
It's okay.
I'm so short, you can't reach the mic anyway.
You can pull it down.
So, okay, I think that's your question.
I got, I got, you answered my question.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. So I think Scott's question was, you plan on moving on the townhome sooner than later if you have people in them, and he said yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So then we have a motion on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
So Mark and I will work with Dwayne and start working on the closing documents.
I would like to get it rolling as soon as possible because I have contractors lined up, and we could be putting footings in the ground in prefab footings that are pre-insulated and everything within three weeks.
Okay. So I'm assuming Stevie will be in touch with him after you and Mark, right, get the contract going?
Yep, we'll start working on it.
Okay, so.
I'll be up and talk to you tomorrow then, Steve.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Dwayne. Okay, moving on to eleven B under new business, we have Resolution Number twenty-two-five dash twenty-three, a resolution adopting fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. Should that be twenty-twenty-six? Preliminary property tax levy for, oh, no, twenty-twenty-five preliminary property tax levy for collection in twenty-twenty-six and calling for a truth in taxation hearing.
So as you recall, we had a budget work session meeting last month, and we went through the budget and talked also, discussed the levy. At that work session meeting, we were, at that point in time, we were at eleven and a half percent increase. You asked that that be, come down to under ten percent. Again, this is just a preliminary. We can continue to work on that through the end of the year. But basically, this is, so we're below the ten at this point in time. So we're looking at the truth in taxation, which would be traditionally, it's our first council meeting in December, so this year it'll be December third, and we'd have that hearing and potentially adopt the budget and the levy at that, that same evening after the hearing.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-three. A motion by Padilla. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Rose. Any further discussion or questions?
Steve, just so the people that are watching at home, they understand that, that means our taxes, their tax levy cannot increase any higher than nine point nine five, but it can decrease.
Correct, yeah. Under state law, we would need to go into a referendum to increase it once it's adopted in the preliminary, yes. So generally, that's not done.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. So next on the agenda, we have Third Street East Lot Purchase Offer.
Yes, on your, on your table, Leighton Rose actually submitted a proposal later this afternoon to acquire one of the lots located in the Third Street or Meadow. I forget what they're called. Meadow. Oh, well, you guys know where I'm talking about, right behind the EMS building.
Yep.
So his proposal here is to purchase the property for a dollar, this lot, and he would be responsible then for the soil corrections. Maybe at this point.
I can recruit myself and go up to the podium.
Yeah, why don't you come up to the podium? Maybe you can identify which lot you're referring to here.
So this would be parcel ID three-two-zero-nine-five-three-zero-zero-zero. It'd be the lot right at the curve there. That one. So just, just to the south of kind of the goofy lot in the corner, on the west side of the road, there's those three that are similar next to each other. I'll give you guys a second to look over it and. So basically, kind of the same thing as what Dwayne kind of said, you know, I am looking to build something in town. I've, obviously, I know some of you guys have probably seen my other house that I did earlier, probably a couple of years ago. On Lakeside, I want to build something that's nice. At the same time, I know there's soil corrections to be done there. He's been back and forth on, I guess, what to come up for a fair sale price. Just because obviously it's in a nice neighborhood, but with the soil corrections, I thought, you know, I think it's probably easier for me to fix something or for me to adjust something within the house to make up for soil corrections versus having the city do it. I, I know on like Brant's house out there, the city ended up losing six thousand dollars, and I guess we'll kind of see what happens with this other one that just sold, but, so that's kind of where I'm at. At the same time, you know, this is, it'd be a single family, three-stall garage, kind of the same as what Dwayne said. I want to build it really nice, you know, I don't want to have it cheaply done. Like I said, some of you guys know the project I did in town over there on Lakeside, so. I'll let you guys kind of shoot some questions. I don't think I need to read this like a book, so.
One dollar, you take care of your own soil. Whatever needs to be corrected is on your behalf. City has nothing liable on that.
Yeah, so basically, you know, one dollar, and that's, I'll pay my water and sewer hookup, and you guys pretty much won't hear from me besides building permit. And like I said, I'll be taking that risk if it ends up costing me fifteen thousand or five thousand.
When do you plan on having it done?
I, as soon as, I want to start this fall. I, I'm kind of the same, I just spoke with Deetses today, and I'm going to be using the same precast walls that McGuire's using, so right now I'm just waiting on the bank to finalize some stuff up with financing, which I need to get this done first.
So within two years?
No, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm hoping to have it, I'm hoping to have footings done.
We can put that in the contract, like.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have footings in this fall, but yeah, if you want to do a maximum of two years, and we can kind of do the same thing. If I, for some reason, don't build, you guys can, city can have it back, but I, I want to get at this. I want a winner project, so.
Do we, do we know the, did we ever do soil borings in all those lots, or what do we know about those lots as far as the condition of them?
I, I called Justin Black about it, and maybe Ty can attest or address this better than I, but when I called Justin about it, he, he said that on the east side, those lots, there was some fill that was added prior to the city buying those, and that created some of the problems. But on the west side, the soil over there, there was no fill or anything added there. He thought that maybe three, four feet would have to be excavated, which he thought was very similar to the rest of the community as far as the soils, so he didn't think it would be too bad over there at all from a soil correction standpoint. Certain, I don't know if we ever did any soil borings per se. I think there was some test digging done out there. He did mention that, that we had done some test digs just to see what we had over there. And maybe that's where Ty can attest to. So this, this is all previous to me being here in town. But that's basically what he shared with me.
Steve, on those other lots, didn't the city get the value of the lot, and then we paid for the corrective action to the lot?
The last one we sold, that was the arrangement, that we sold it for twenty-five thousand dollars with the understanding the city would be responsible for the soil corrections. That was a lot on, again, on the east side. It's the second one from the top. There, where it says sold on it, on that aerial photo.
And how much was the soil correction?
We, we don't, we haven't done them yet because they haven't broke ground or they haven't staked out. What we were waiting for them is to stake out the house, and then we would come in there and do the soil corrections at that time. So with that one, it's, you may recall, they did get an extension on construction. They're looking at next year as far as building that house. So we don't know at this point where it's going to be.
And just to add on top of that a little bit, I talked to the building inspector today, and he kind of mentioned about having concerns with the soil that if I do a project that obviously I'd have to be looked into. I know Brant's was, I think, thirty-five thousand is what the city ended up having put back into it. Kind of like Steve said from S E H, we don't think the problem's going to be as bad on the west side of the road. But I do know Darren, when I talked to him today, mentioned that he would be concerned about digging a basement on how deep it might go. You know, so that's, I don't think it's going to be a thirty-five thousand dollar problem, but.
Are you planning on a basement?
Yeah, this will be, a basement will be there too. So I'll be digging down eight, nine feet, so. That's where, and I'd be happy to report back too. I mean, I'm, I'm pretty open communication as far as if what we find, back to you guys.
I'm, I'm not opposed. I think it's a great idea if you want to get a house on there. My only concern is if we do this, then are we committed to doing that on the rest of the lots that are there?
That's my concern too.
I mean, if we open that door, then everybody's out once a lot's going to come and say the same thing. And to me, if we don't know what the soil corrections are, we might be losing out on something there if we're selling them for a dollar and there's really no soil corrections needed.
And we did have a realtor look at the lots within, I think it was about a year ago, and said they were fairly priced. So yeah, I think we're, we're setting a precedent, so I don't know if we want to talk about this in a closed session or if you guys are, or what, what the council's thinking right now.
I probably, if we kind of need to drill down on some of the details, a closed meeting's probably a better place to, to do that.
Just one more thing before we wrap up. If this does go really good, I guess my plan would be hopefully to build maybe more in the future. You know, obviously, I got a few years to get this one done, but you know, if there's lots open, I'd like to see more go up. You know, so there too, I'd be opening the door, and if I dig and the soil's pretty good, you know, that's something in the future that, you know, I'm happy to share that information with you guys, you know, if the next one's, I think, about fifteen or twenty thousand is the normal asking price. You know, to where then we know what the dirt's like over there, but.
Is your goal late to sell these, rent them, or what's your, I mean, if you want to, like this one that you're going to do, and if you want to do another one, what's your?
Well, basically, my goal is to hang on to it for at least a handful of years, for sure during, obviously, I got to be in town, living for city council purposes, but I guess I kind of see what happens with the market. Obviously, I'd be building a lot of it myself, kind of like I did my last projects. You know, anywhere from a year or so to get that done, and then at that point, maybe list it if it sells, great, and then do another one. And if it don't, hang on to it for a couple of years. I'm just kind of looking at this as a hobby, so to speak.
So it's open, either sell it, or maybe if it don't sell right, or whatever, depending on what the market is doing, then you'd be looking at maybe renting it out for a short time?
I probably wouldn't even rent it. I, I personally would live in it. And then, yeah, I, I don't, I want to do owner occupied, and so it'd be either I own it or I would be selling it to somebody else that wants it, and then I can go build a second one or third, whatever. somebody else that wants it, and then I can go build that, uh, second one or third, whatever. We're, we're talking over many years here, but.
Yeah, no, my, my was just whether what your goal was there, is if you're gonna live there and then sell it and build another one, and you'd move there, or if you were looking at rental, or what, what your goal was there.
That's, that's kinda what I've done over the past couple houses I've done, um, between my, you know, helping with my grandparents, and then that one out there, lived in it as I built it, then moved on to, you know, my other investments in Arlington, or, uh, do another house, so. It's kinda, in a perfect world, probably two years and sell it and do another one, in a perfect world, so.
Is there anything else? Otherwise I think we'll, um, close the meeting when we're done with our regular meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next item on the agenda is eleven D Manufacturing Week Proclamation.
I did put an updated version of that, I did some tweaking on it, um, with some more current stats, I guess, so it's on your table.
So I will read the City of Gaylord Manufacturing Week Proclamation. Whereas manufacturing is a dynamic and robust industry crucial to the health and strength of Minnesota's diverse economy, and whereas in twenty twenty-four, more than three hundred and twenty thousand people worked in manufacturing in Minnesota, making it the second largest employment is, industry in the state. And in twenty twenty-four, manufacturing jobs accounted for eleven percent of total employment in the state, or one in every nine jobs. And whereas in twenty twenty-three, manufacturing contributed five, or fifty-seven point two billion dollars into Minnesota's economy, and whereas Minnesota added nearly eleven thousand manufacturing jobs from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four. And whereas manufacturing in Minnesota pays an average annual wage of eighty-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars, which was twelve percent higher than the state's overall average wage in twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development expects more than ninety-three thousand job openings for manufacturing production positions alone through twenty thirty-two. And whereas there are roughly eight thousand six hundred and twenty-five manufacturing companies in Minnesota, making a wide range of projects that create solutions and improve quality of life in Minnesota and all around the world. Now therefore, I, Don Kretsky, Mayor, along with City Council members, Leighton Rose, Lynn Groko, Scott Kufal, Jessica Eager, and Tony Padilla, do hereby proclaim the week of October third through October tenth, twenty twenty-five, to be observed as Gaylord Manufacturing Week, adopted by the City Council on the seventeenth day of September, twenty twenty-five. Thank you to our manufacturing community. Any, uh, anything else or any closing comments? Then we're going to recess the regular meeting to close the meeting.
Could you take a mo, should have a, uh, Mark, Mark should have a motion for that?
Yes.
To recess the regular meeting.
We need a motion to recess the regular meeting. Motion by Eager.
Second.
Seconded by Kufal. Any questions or discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.